Good evening. Mr. City Attorney, can you report out for us, please?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. We had two items on our closed-session agenda this evening. One was a council, a conference of legal counsel on an anticipated item of litigation. You received a briefing from the city attorney's office. There was no reportable action on that item. The second item was a conference of legal counsel with regard to one item of existing litigation, and you also had a briefing from the city attorney's office. We had a discussion, but there was no other reportable action on that item. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and good evening. I'm calling to order the November 12, 2025 regular city council meeting to order. Councilmember Gutierrez, will you lead us in the pledge? And then will everybody remain standing for Mayor Protam to give the invocation.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here today, let us acknowledge the spirit of cooperation that unites us. And as we approach the Thanksgiving season, let us be thankful for each person here who unselfishly give us a portion of their limited time and energy to work for the greater good. May our time together be productive, and may our united efforts bring about the best positive results. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carnavale.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gregory.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I'm here. Madam City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we have public comments. City Clerk, will you please read the Statement of Participation?
Public comment is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are within the city council's jurisdiction but not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item that is not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or request that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. If you're a member of the public and you wish to address the city council, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the entrance and submit it to the city clerk. He will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you have materials to distribute to the city council, please do not approach them. The city clerk will distribute all materials. We do have a few people that would like to speak this evening. The first speaker is Janet Ream.
Good afternoon, Ms. Ream.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm back. I have listened to the meetings during the summer, and I've watched with admiration for the people who work at C4 and understand that they would like to keep their jobs, have good jobs. It's what we all hope and wish for. My problem is, is this comes back to even though we do not spend, the vast majority of us do not spend, 12 months a year in Cathedral City doesn't make us any less important during any time that we are here, and that it should not and couldn't, shouldn't definitely not be our problem, the city's problem, but C4's problem, and to assure these people stay employed by fulfilling their requirements in order to keep their business open. And I hope that they can do that. We're not opposed to them having the jobs. We just do not like to have the repercussions of the smell. Has it got somewhat better? At times. Since I've been here, when I arrived, the day I arrived, it was a constant, all-day situation. I tried and tried to find the number. I called City Hall, got no response. Called again the next day, got no response. Finally, I got ahold of Mr. Talon. He did send me the website. I'm very disappointed in that website now, because it gives, doesn't give you, it says the time that you're reporting it. It doesn't give you an opportunity to say whether or not it's five minutes, five hours, or what it is. So if that could be modified, that would be fantastic. We still have an issue. We still have a problem. And I'm hoping beyond all hope that the city will not authorize C4 to even build the second building until such time as this has been taken care of. And I hope the city will work with us, as we've tried to work with the city and even with C4. Another issue came up the other day. They decided to trim their trees that are on their side of the wall, which is fine. They didn't notify any of us, and any of us that lived along that wall end up with the trimmings in our property. I called immediately and asked if we could make some type of arrangements to have them clean it up, or what do we need to do to work together. That was Tuesday. I've yet to receive a response, and I've called three times and left messages all three times. So we're trying, but it's very trying at times, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is David Sanchez.
Good evening, Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening. Well, I'm here to pull your ears again, so sorry. But as you can see, nobody's here. You guys don't invite anybody here. I have spoke with you guys plenty of times about Avenida, about this, and Buristo. I don't live on neither of those streets, but there's the pavements coming up. It's been over five months. You haven't fixed it. I fell there. I scraped my knees. Nothing. You guys haven't done absolutely nothing. I went to code enforcement. They didn't do shit. I came to you guys. You haven't done shit about it. I'm pissed. I'm sorry. Public Works contacted me. They said they were going to do something about it in about a month or so. They haven't done nothing about it. When are you guys going to do something about it? You guys collect taxes? I mean, you guys raise our taxes. What is it for? Road improvement, or was it for you guys' pockets? Come on, guys. I mean, I can go talk to people, and I can get shit done more than you guys can. And I'm sorry. I'm pissed off, but it is the truth. What I'm speaking here is the truth. You guys know that. Okay? And if you guys want to talk to me about it, that's what we're here for. You guys willing to buy people here? I'm happy those ladies came in and talked about something. The other day, I was over there on Ramon by DePom, the marijuana place. It's just all the way to this side, a little bit of this side of DePom. You guys don't do nothing about it. All you guys want, the guys want money in your pockets for the city, and you guys don't do nothing about it. Invite people to come in. Please. I mean, you guys don't do nothing. I mean, I have a bunch of stuff I can talk to, but you know what? That's besides the point. Ernesto, you know, you always told me that you guys, you were going to do something about this. You never done anything. I'm sorry, buddy. But you know what? You need to get these people behind you. They don't support you, man. They don't follow you. They don't stay in your way. You know the neighborhood we live in? That's probably the worst. This other gentleman here, and this other party people, probably even gated communities, they don't care. But you know what I'm talking about. I mean, I talked to a couple of people, and they were able to fix their yards. I went and knocked on their door, and they were able to fix their yards. Why? Because you guys don't do nothing about it. Do something. I challenge you. I mean, when are you guys going to fix that street? I don't even live on that street, but you know what? I fell there because I walk every day. I'm diabetic, and I have to walk. Sometimes they even stand on the sidewalks. I mean, you can slip and fall. You guys don't do nothing. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. What do you guys have to say for yourselves? Huh? You raise your taxes supposedly for improvements and everything? Nothing. Nothing.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, please do something about it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any other request-to-speak forms for this item, but if you're a member of the public and you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Our next item will be public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, not public comments, council reports. And I will start down here.
Thank you, Mayor. It was kind of a fun week. Started off with a lot of fun with the kids. Spooktacular. And then went to the grand opening of Dutch Brothers on DePom in front of Food for Less. And I got to tell you what, a beautiful store. Met the owners, young entrepreneurs. They got a wonderful staff in there. I was really impressed with the organization, and they have a line wrapped around the store continuously. It's amazing. I drive up and down there a couple dozen times a day, and they're doing very well. I'm glad to see that. CB Link, we all joined CB Link at the access point, Cathedral City. That was really, really exciting. The mayor did an excellent job emceeing that and leading that off, and we're really proud to get that completed. And then I went to the 18th-a-year Fields of Valor Ceremony. Thank you, Chief Crumb, and for your support, and the police department, and the motors, and the officer that showed up, and the firemen showed up with the fire trucks and everything. And Ryan, thank you for putting out there all the information. And thanks, council, for the donations that you gracefully gave the Rotary Club. We just have a little problem, and Ryan put it out today. But it's evident it's going to rain tomorrow. We got to get those three thousand flags down. Ryan put out his 30 people he's got volunteering to be there at 7:00 in the morning. We'll provide lunch. The people will provide lunch for him. As soon as the flags are down, there's a gimmick to that. But we need as much help. And if the fire department could have any help there, or the police department can have any people out there, we'd really appreciate any volunteers that we can get out there. And Sunday, I went out there to hang out, and there was a lot of actions out there. And I picked a guy, and he was actually from an outdoor resort. His name is Chuck Caswell. And he had this hot rod. It's a 1924 Phantom pickup truck with a ZZ5 Chevy small block, 400 horsepower. And what this club does, Ironman Club, they get these parts donated every year, and they donate all, they put it up for auction, and they sell this vehicle in auction, and they get $300,000, $400,000. And this year, this vehicle here that's called Dress Blue is going down to the Jade Leno auction, and they're hoping to get about $1 million for it, if possible. But all that money goes to the fallen soldiers' families. It's all donated out. It's a really, really good event, and it was on display out there, and I got to tell you, it was beautiful. And let me see, we participated last night. The event had the fall, the sound of the Apple Theater, the Beatles, the Total Hot Dogs out there. And then next week, we go in to attend the Pops at the Agua Cali, and they just came over. And the last thing I got, Mayor, I mentioned this to Ann a few months ago, and Ryan followed through it. Cathedral City has now a flag. You want to help me with this, or hustle? You got to see this thing. I mean, we don't know where we're going to put it, but it's up to you, Ryan. Can you get a shot of this? Is that the right size?
If the right size is huge.
Is that totally cool? Mayor, why don't you get up, or council, come on up here. Let me get a little picture here. Yeah, it's really tight. Thank you, Ann, for following through with this. It's a little tighter. Can you get this on in there? Yeah.
Hold that tight.
Okay. Your face got a little tighter. Put it right on your face, Jessica.
No.
Right here. There you go. That works. Got it? Okay. So we got a couple of these. We put them up there. Here, I'll take this. I'm not going to fold and get it back in the bag.
A little bit later.
Okay, I'll do that. And I believe, and actually, the old restaurant that Ernesto Gutierrez used to own, Tortillas, changed the name to Guadalajara. I went there for breakfast this morning, and it's a new owner in there, second owner after Councilman Gutierrez sold it. And they had good food, good breakfast. It was really delicious, good service, cleaned, remodeled inside. And he's going to need a little bit of help. He'll shut down for a couple of months. So if you want to get some tacos, a burrito, it's really a nice family-owned business. I met his son. He's a cook in there as well. Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you so much. I participated in the same events, but I wanted to shout out to Ms. Patsy for her participation in the, she was in the car, and it was recognized in the desert sun. Picture they took, absolutely fantastic. So it was wonderful. I did attend the Boys and Girls Club. Eric Besseril was there, and I think John was there, and many of us attended it. But they had the, basically, the dedication and grand opening of their garden center. And it was just a, to see it before, and it was just this dirtlot backyard, and to see it transformed with the help of donations and lots of volunteers. And the gentleman who's a master gardener, who's taking the students through all these classes in gardening, and focus on the environment, and healthy eating, and it was just a wonderful asset to that Boys and Girls Club. The team at the Boys and Girls Club does a phenomenal job in outreach to our community, and I can't say that enough. It's wonderful. And I wanted to, it was already mentioned about the Fields of Valor, but Justin Gardner was one of the speakers, and he did such a fantastic job. You are a wonderful speaker. Every year, I'm so moved by the whole process and the whole processional coming in, and this year was just as special. It was really wonderful. Thank you so much. And Brad Hammer was able to participate, and I wanted to give a shout out to him. He's my neighbor, but he was a Cathedral City fire member, fireman, and he has the vintage fire truck, and he was able to participate this year, and so he was out there full force. And he just loved it, and it was the first time he spent a lengthy time. He and his wife have a commitment for that fire truck usually on the same weekend, so this is the first time in a while that he's been out there. But thank you. And to Joanne Cannon, who, along with the Evening Rotary, has really made this happen for our community. I did attend the AMVets Veterans Memorial I did attend the AMVETS Veterans Memorial Event at Desert Memorial Park. And it's put on by Tom Swan Hernandez, who's president of AMVETS. And it was beautifully attended and this year they included an essay contest and it was elementary students from Sunny Sands Elementary School. The four were recognized. And they wrote these wonderful letters about what veterans mean to our world and our, and the United States. One little one wrote, "Keep up the good work, guys." So I thought that was just terrific. And Senator Rosalisi Achoa Boa was there and she was able to help present some of the awards. So it was really a fun, fun and beautiful, poignant celebration of community. And I was asked to be a speaker and I ended with the pride that we have in Cathedral City that we are an international city of peace. And that they, as part of their peace initiative, they have three focus areas and one is inner peace, peace in our community for our residents and tourists and visitors and global world peace. So Bob McKechnie and Karen Riley and Sue Townsley made that initiative happen. And the two of them were here earlier and I'm sorry I neglected to make my remarks in so they could hear it because of them we have that. And if you haven't seen the fabulous billboard going south on DePom from Highway 10, it says, "Choose Peace," and that's part of the Cathedral City Peace Initiative. Mayor Ross and Mayor Protem, we attended the League of California Cities Division Meeting and it was held this week at the Thompson Hotel in Palm Springs. And it's a wonderful organization and the president is voted in and out yearly and Jackie Cassius was our president last year and Colleen Wallace, who represents the city of Banning, is going to be for the next year. And the Cathedral City Auto Center, I had the opportunity of attending their monthly marketing meeting. And Eric Besseril, our wonderful economics director, was able to present the final analysis and summation of the SWOT analysis. And SWOT is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And it really is an opportunity for us to focus our attention on this wonderful resource that we have in our community and how we can work together to elevate our focus on them and their collaboration with the city. Those are my remarks.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Everyone's been so busy in the three weeks since we met before, so many of these have been mentioned, but I'll go down through the list. So on October 25th, we did have the Howl-a-Ween Dog Costume Contest that was held in Panorama Park, Dog Park. Antonio Beishu, of course, is the driving force behind that and it was quite well attended. Again, thanks to our sponsor grocery outlet that provided snacks and some funding prizes and the other businesses that also participated. The next, so that was the costume for the dogs. The next day, of course, was Spooktacular downtown. A lot of city staff, our Public Safety Council and other staff participated in many ways, many community members. There were a lot of booths, I think 70,000, Ryan, 70,000 pieces of candy all gone. Sammy, I thought there was going to be 60 this year, but you upped it to 70 in hopes that there'd be at least one left, but no, there was not even one left. So, all right, but a great event, enjoyed by all. And then on that, next Monday, I did represent the City of Riverside County Transportation Commission's Budget Implementation Committee, a number of items that were later approved at a meeting earlier today. One of them, there was some discussion I participated in, had to do. The commission in Riverside County, we don't have call boxes anymore. Anybody remember what call boxes were, you know, out and you would break down and you would walk some distance unless you had to break down right in front of one and you could call on a call box. One time there were thousands in Riverside County and it got down to a few hundred in very remote areas, but they've come to the point where the technology keeps changing and they can't find a vendor that can keep them going. And besides, they get very, very few calls because people have these things called cell phones in their pockets. So they did all go, but it was, there was some consternation when that happened and I was one of the ones that was raising some concerns because I think that makes some assumptions, that you have a phone that works, that you're in an area that there's coverage because there are still gaps, especially if you have certain carriers. So the commission committed to doing a study to see if there was, what technology there was or other freeway patrols or these types of things that could help address those areas or even identify which areas the coverage are at issue. So they took the first step on getting that study initiated and we adjusted it a little bit in the committee and it was adopted today. So they were talking about all kinds of things like using Waze or other communications that people have in their cars now. A lot of them have a button that you can push to call for help, those types of things. So that should be an interesting study. It'll take about a year to come back. And apparently we're the first, although many counties are getting rid of those call boxes for the same issues, we're the first county that said, "We should really do something though to look into it and not just take them out." So I'm glad that we're a leader there. And then the next, oh, and then on Halloween, I did Halloween at home and I live in the Panorama Park area and I had some help, again, Antonio, help so much. That is a, quite a busy area, hundreds of kids. It did seem like it might have been a little down, at least at my house this year, although I'm told it was very busy at the parks. But glad to live in a neighborhood like that where there's so many families and people feel safe to come and do trick or treating. On Monday, November 3rd, I attended the Sebag Transportation Commission or Committee Meeting representing the city. We did have, of interest, we did have a presentation from Caltrans talking about the work that they're, the plans that they have for I-10 because you may, you may have noticed if you go towards Arizona, they built a truck lane climbing up and done other work farther on. And then down towards Cabazon, whitewired to Cabazon, they did some repaving down there, but they haven't done a whole lot here in the valley. They realized the pavement is quite bad. The good news is that the portion from Indian to Monterey is going to be resurfaced soon, according to Caltrans standards, soon, starting in July of 2028. Supposed to be done by 2030. So that portion, again, from Indian to Monterey, and they mentioned through Cathedral City, it sounds like a long ways off, but wait. Because then the part from Highway 111, which they already fixed up to, to go to Indian, that's going to start in 2032 and then in 2034, if they get the funding, because they're not sure, and they're using SB1 funding for this. So those numbers haven't quite added up for that portion yet, so they're hoping to get that part done. So these are major projects, of course, that Caltrans is doing. And we continue to advocate for that here in the Coachella Valley, so, and well, technically throughout Riverside County because we all drive the roadways. So there is work coming, but just like happens in the city, when you talk about certain segments, sometimes we're talking out in five and 10-year windows out of the future, so is Caltrans, but it is on the radar. And then later that day on that Monday, I did attend the Senior Center Gala Glimpse. The gala is coming up in the spring for the Senior Center and they did have a little gathering there to talk about that, to try to drum up sponsorships. The interim city manager, Ann Amros, was also there in attendance. And they, I can't remember the name of it, they announced their headliner is going to be, it's a, it's a boy band group that does all the songs of the old boy bands. So that should be fun. You can look forward to that in the spring. And then on November 4th, I was able to attend the first Taste and Sounds of this little mini version, the Pride Edition, and it was very, very well attended. I was really surprised, there must have been at least 250 or 300, 350 people there. Excellent show. And so again, we love our, we love the Taste and Sounds series. Then on November 6th, I was joined by the council. I don't think the mayor was able to make it for the Dutch Brothers Grand Opening.
Well, I was there a week or two.
All right, well, she checked it out. So the Dutch Brothers is now open on DePom. In fact, they had been open for probably a week or 10 days before the opening and was a great, a great grand opening and it's a great addition to our city. They're doing gangbuster business of taxable sales, so Kevin, the money's coming. All right. And then on that Friday, as already been mentioned, was our CB Link here in Cathedral City, the grand opening, they did grand, grand opening ribbon cuttings in all of the six cities. I think they're done now that have CB Link at this time. So that was very nice. It was kind of hot, but the mayor did a nice job with her introductions and her speeches. And we saw the representative from Caltrans and our congressman was there and of course, Tom Kirk, Cheryl Benoit, representing John Benoit, you know, who's passed, but was a major force behind it. So it was a nice event. And then after that came Pride Weekend, it actually started that Friday, went through Sunday. I am on the board of Safe Schools Desert Cities, who puts on the safe, the school zone there. So they was quite busy, went to a couple of Human Rights Campaign events. And at one of the events, the main event on Saturday, as I'm walking out, there's a gentleman from Human Rights Campaign and he's handing cards and he says to me, "Make sure you save the date to come to Cathedral City's LGBT Days." And he hands me this card and I look at this card and it's got pictures from there and has all of the information. And this, of course, this event was attended by people from primary, from, well, from all over, but primarily from Southern California, Los Angeles, San Diego County, Orange County, a lot of local people in Palm Springs. And so I thought that was brilliant, that that was being advertised and something actually in their hand that they could add it to their calendar or they could use the QR code. So thank you. I think this was Michael and Ernie from our promoters and their team that arranged to have this done, but this is the great kind of thinking that even though it's months out, that they, they got these people that can hopefully, a number of them will add it to their calendar. So, and then a number of, well, let's see, Mayor and Councilmember Lamb and I and a bunch of staff and volunteers were out in the blazing sun for the Pride Parade on Sunday, November 9th. Very nicely done, very well attended Pride. So I was low hearing them say, "Welcome, your neighbors come to Cathedral City," right in the middle of Palm Springs. So that was very nice. And then, as has already been mentioned, several of us attended the Calcity's reception this Monday at the Thompson Hotel. And then earlier today, I was out at the Riverside County Transportation Commission in Riverside and I, of note there, actually WRCOG, which is Western Riverside County's version of Sebag, they had, they did a presentation, apparently they'd done it some of the cities there, and it focused on their cities. But it was very interesting because they've done some studies with data that they purchased from some of the same types of firms that we purchase for economic development that study trends and patterns. And they did some studies there about where people live, where people, do they go to work in their cities? Do they go to work in the county? The county, people that work there, when people make trips, where they're going and are they going within their city? And some of the conclusions were really interesting because, you know, we're told we need to build more housing. And so they've done, they did some reviews and they find out that often in cities that people that live there, more than 50%, go somewhere else to work. So then the answer seems to be, we'll build more businesses, you know, more jobs. And you know, put jobs in your city and they found out, well, when you do that, more than 50% of the people that work in those jobs come from somewhere else. So, you know, the state has, I think everyone is aware, has made it very difficult to expand freeways. And in particular, they don't want to build capacity. They worry about vehicle miles traveled and they tell cities that you need to do these things. You need to build more housing or get more good jobs in your city. And it was interesting in the sense that that doesn't really work because you end up just clogging the streets that you already have more. Not saying we don't need more housing, not saying we don't need more jobs, but it's not going to work to, to solve transportation problems. Like some assume, they say, "Well, if you have jobs, then the people in your city will be able to take those jobs and then they won't have to drive." But the reality is people have choices and the facts don't show that that works. So that's really good. Some things that they mentioned that their studies show are really helpful are, is something called signal synchronization, which they don't have in Western Riverside County, but we already know that we have some synchronized roadways now through the CV Sync program and have a number more. It was already mentioned earlier, our study session. And so then they talked about how that worked. The other thing that they say that the studies show always works is microtransit. And I know Sunline, they mentioned that the Riverside Transportation or the bus line there has some microtransit, but I know Sunline has microtransit too. So it seemed like some of the things that they know work are already moved ahead here in the Coachella Valley. So we need to keep up those efforts. And they really said, "You need to do everything because you still need to build housing and you still need to have jobs, but you also need to build capacity on roadways and try these other things." So I thought it was very interesting. All right. And then I just want to note that our next meeting, we will be off over the Thanksgiving holiday. So our next meeting will be Wednesday, December 10th, which will be the end of the term for our current mayor, Nancy Ross. So, but we'll wait and embarrass her at that meeting. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, we started observing daylight savings time. As you can see, many of you are falling asleep and so am I, I'm still getting used to it. And yesterday we celebrated Veterans Day. And just remember that freedom does not come free. Many people actually pay the ultimate price for our freedom. So just remember that. And congratulate the veteran or those who are serving in the military. I'm not going to go over all the events that I attended, most of them already been mentioned, will mention, the ones that have not been talked about. I did attend one, which our mayor was there and a little bit later after I arrived. It was the Living Healthy Expo. It took place at an amphitheater. Never attended the event and when I showed up, the first thing that gravitated me towards it was a lady was on stage talking about health and also exercise. And she was so energetic and so interesting that I just stood there for about 20 minutes throughout her entire presentation and she was just great. She talked about the connection between working out and actually living healthy. And it wasn't about looking great, it was about actually working out, feeling great and preventing falls and also how much it helps you mentally when you work out, how much stress it relieves and all these other things. This lady was incredible and a lot of people were just walking by and they just stopped and listened to her entire speech. It was absolutely phenomenal. And after the, her speech, I started walking around and saw that there were so many vendors there, from dog groomers to people that helped seniors with so many illnesses and they provided, there was all sorts of doctors and offices that provided services to many people. There was probably about 70, between 70 to 80 vendors there. It was a great event, well attended. When I went in, it was probably early in the morning and people just kept on coming in. And I ran into quite a few people that I knew that were actually vendors and they just bragged about what a great event it was. And later on in the week, I attended also the first and the kickoff of our Taste and Sounds of Cathedral City. Minutes after I was there, I realized that I had another event at the same time, exactly the same time. So I just rushed out of there. The other event was more important. It was the Steering Committee for the Development Sony Update. And that, I attended that and that was a great meeting. It was a Zoom meeting, but it lasted a little over two hours, which went by so fast because there's so much information that we're talking about, so much great information that we're talking about. And our next meeting is going to be sometime in December and I can't wait about all the great things that we're, that we're talking about. We'll be talking about businesses in relation to parking and many other things. So I'll businesses in relation to parking and many other things. So I'll keep you updated as to what we talk about. And tomorrow, I'll be attending the Coachella Valley Association of Government Conservation Committee meeting. And remember, coming up, it will be the Hot Air Balloon Festival, starting November 21st to 23rd. Don't forget. And as was mentioned, Thanksgiving, one of my favorite days. I'm not going to see you, so I wish you happy Thanksgiving now. And back in close my port, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Good evening. I'll try to keep this short. I guess, I guess the cat's out of the bag. It's my last night. I'm looking forward to, to having just a few more minutes at the, before he is sworn in to just tell you all goodbye. Not exactly goodbye, but you know, a step down, goodbye. But as I join you here tonight, and I'm wrapping up this year as your mayor, my heart is full of gratitude. Serving this community has been one of the greatest honors of my life. From the very first day, I've been inspired by the spirit of cooperation, compassion, and determination that defines our city. To our residents, thank you. Our trust, your engagement, and your ideas have guided every decision we've made, whether it was through community meetings, local events, or a simple conversation on our streets. You reminded me daily why this work matters. To my fellow city council members, I could not have asked for a more dedicated team. Your commitment to listening, leading, and finding common ground has made our city stronger. We don't always agree, but together we face challenges, we celebrate achievements, and we lay the groundwork for a brighter future for all of our residents. And now, as we look ahead, I have every confidence that our progress will continue under the leadership of President Ray Gray. Raymond brings the steady hand, a clear vision, a deep love for this community. I know that just as you have supported me, you will stand with him as he leads us into our next chapter. So just once again, thank you for your partnership, your encouragement, and your belief in what we can accomplish together. It has truly been an honor to serve as your mayor. And here's to our city. I applaud you. Thank you all. All right, back to business. We have, we have, you read the consent agenda items, please.
Yes. Item number three A is to lawful reading of ordinances on agenda. Item number three B is to receive and file the commissioner committee member attendance record. Item number three C is to approve the October 22nd, 2025 study session and regular council meeting minutes. Item number three D is to receive and file the check demand for October of 2025. Item number three E is to approve an amendment to the professional services agreement with SCS engineers for cannabis odor control support and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with SCS engineers. Item number three F is to approve an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cathedral City establishing a pilot program for food truck vendor permits on private property, known as the food truck pilot program. And item number three G is to approve an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cathedral City repealing chapters 8.02, 8.04, 8.08, 8.10, 8.12, 8.14, 8.18, and 8.20 of Title 8 of the Cathedral City Municipal Code and adopting new chapters 8.02, 8.04, 8.12, 8.14, 8.18, and 8.20, thereby adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code and certain specified dependencies thereof, including local amendments and finding the ordinance exempt from CEQA. Item, I think, that concludes the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, didn't quite catch that.
That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any items that were on the consent agenda, please?
So I don't have any request to speak for them. So, but I do have some written comments that we will provide for the record per our policy. Item number three D, Sunshine Herrera expressed her concern with the transparency of city spending on the check demand. Item number three E, Peter Burdard dropped off written comments opposing further food truck regulations. And it looks like that's all I have for the consent. If you are a member of the public and you wish to provide any comments on any of the consent agenda items, now would be the time. And I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
So Mayor, for the record, can I just point out that after the original packet was published, there were some clarifications made to item three C, the meeting minutes, and to item three G regarding the California building code, specifically some language dealing with walls and roofing materials. So my understanding is what we'll be voting on will be the corrected minutes and the corrected item, correct?
That is correct, Mayor Potem.
Thank you.
Well, with that being said, do we have a motion to approve?
And with that, I'll move approval.
Oh, second. All right. Then may we have a vote.
Sorry, I was a little slow.
No, well, that's just how you are. Geez.
Hold on just a moment. Bear with me.
Patient.
Let me just do a roll call vote for this one. So we have a, excuse me, a motion by Mayor Potem Gregory and a second by, was it Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Carnavale?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gregory?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
The motion carries all eyes.
Thank you very much. And number four, our public hearings. We'll start with the legislative action. Let's see where we are here. It's to award a construction contract to Onyx Paving. Good evening. It's been a month of Sundays. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members. Tonight, I'll be presenting the award contracts for AICIP Cycle 11, the pedestrian crossing upgrades project. Starting off with background, in 2022, the city submitted four projects for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle 11. So we're selected for funding with, through Caltrans. Project AICIP in particular was a 90-10 grant, meaning 90% would be funded through the grant and 10% would be provided as a match. The breakdown is provided on the slide. In 2024, Caltrans authorized the city to move with the preliminary engineering phase of the project. And city council awarded a professional service agreement to SCC traffic PE phase. In 2025, PE was completed and Caltrans authorized the city to move forward to the construction phase of the project. Description is this project will be at the intersection of 30th Avenue and San LJ Avenue, right next to James Workman Middle School. And the scope of the project includes curb bulbouts, ADA curb ramps, flashing stop signs, a flashing beacon, and LED safety lighting.
Andrew, could you pause for a second? I think Tracy's going to bring you a different mic to try.
Sorry.
I'm sure getting some feedback on that one. I apologize for the inconvenience tonight. The, the council chambers knows that it's going to be gutted soon to be fixed. So it, all of the microphones decided to die right beforehand. So we're
That's right. We'll show you.
Having to have a little bit of an interim solution until we start next month.
And it'll all be done by December 10th? All done?
No.
I'm going to just give you mine. I can share with the chief.
Andrew, is it you? Are you breaking them?
Okay. All right. So, once again, the project will be right next to James Workman Middle School. And the scope includes curb bulbouts, curb ramps, flashing stop signs, school zone, flashing beacon, and LED safety lighting. The proposed improvements are shown on these next two slides. So you can see the curb bulbouts outlined in red on the image on the left, and the flashing stop signs shown on the right. And then, as well as safety lighting and the school zone flashing beacons. So the invitation to bid was advertised in the Desert Sun on August 17th and August 25th. And the invitation to bid was also advertised on, in the Cathedral City website from August 17th to September 9th. And on September 9th, the bid opening was held at City Hall. The city received three bids with Onyx Paving Company from Yorba Linda having the, having the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Because, granted amount, city staff confirmed with Caltrans. And Caltrans informed city staff that under current AICIP program guidelines, the project is not eligible for additional grant funds. So to go over the fiscal impact, the program CIP budget included the AICIP grant balance, as well as the Traffic, Traffic Safety Fund to provide the local match in the amount of $260,015. And the construction budget includes the lowest bid amount and a proposed 10% contingency, bringing the total construction budget to $336,600. And additional local funding will be necessary to move forward with that. So the amount that is being requested is $76,485, which is the difference between the construction budget and the program CIP budget. And these, the traffic safety funds are being, that were programmed to be the local match for all of the AICIP Cycle 11 projects are being proposed to be used as the fund. So the total traffic safety funds required will be in the amount of $129,510, as you can see here. And as shown in your staff report, here's the fiscal impact shown on the table. And this agenda item aligns with goal B of our five-year strategic plan of community investments. Let's see. Request the city council to award a construction contract to Onyx Paving Company in the amount of $306,000. Approve a 10% contingency in the amount of $30,600. Authorize the city manager to execute, execute both contracts and authorize the city engineer to request bonds and insurances and issue the notice to proceed for the project. With that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, but you better stay plugged.
Okay.
Councilmember Carnavale?
Thank you. I just have one. You know, I constantly see this 10% contingency, $30,000 for unforeseen, unforeseeable construction costs. How often is that used? Almost every time? Because we never get a report back. I, we had to spend more until it's already done.
I would say it's pretty often that we go, that we use the ten, use the contingency. The whole amount, I haven't gotten to that level yet. But we, I have used contingency in my projects.
They go out there, they research the project, they measure everything, they see everything there. What could be unforeseeable? I mean, it, it.
I'll defer to this.
Yeah.
Hello, Andrew.
No, it's a, it's a normal standard practice because paper and engineers, not everything's perfect. So there are a few anomalies out there, especially when you do paving work or building with constr-, like concrete bulbouts and everything. A lot of it's based on the amount of material being poured out there and everything. So especially with paving and things like that, it's based on whatever's calculated.
But they know what it's, they know what they need. They know how much, how much flour they got to put in a cake, you know? I mean, so how
They know just about how much flour they need to put in a cake. So it, it, we, we've actually been doing pretty good on the fact that contingency's been saved on projects. But when we get down to it, something that wasn't figured out in the contractor need an adjustment.
Wouldn't that be the contractor's responsibility to figure that out?
The way the public contracts are, you know, you go line item by line item.
Oh, okay.
Unless it's an all-inclusive contract, which is something that, like a design build, that's a different story. We actually don't do a lot of those because there's a lot of risk involved in that, too.
So you're aware, if they say, "Hey, I need another $15,000," you're aware, or someone is aware of what's going to happen if they don't just surprise you at the end of the day, right? So you go out and you research the up-
Sometimes we get a surprise on something that's missed by the engineers that put together the plan.
Okay.
Sometimes not. I will say that when we do our contingencies, it's based on the type of project and the risk factors in there. So there's a lot of time that Armando or I will see a project and I'll say, "You better increase the, the contingency by 5%." Usually it goes to 20%. We don't go much higher. And as low as it goes, I typically let staff as 10%. You need at least a 10% just for the amount. So there's a little skill set in there and looking at the risk factor on the project.
Okay. Just one last question on the contingency. So if they go over the $30,600, you have to come back to council? Or would you just, excuse me, or would you just go ahead and prove it if it was $40,600?
Typically, we would if it's going to be a bus that large. So if it's a small amount, a couple thousand dollars, probably not.
Okay.
But when it gets to a bigger range, we've got, we got a big change that no one saw and we need to report that.
And Councilmember, the other reason that we put in the contingency too is so that there is that budget authority ahead. So if there is something unforeseen that staff have the ability to address it without having to come back to council to revise the budget for it. Because that sometimes can really hold up a project depending on when the next council meeting is, that they might need to get something fixed at that time.
Makes sense. Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
And that contingency doesn't go away, mind you. It just is unspent and it'll be utilized in another project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I just have one question regarding funding. Why is this project not eligible for funding under the program guidelines?
So with every offer project cycle that Caltrans does for AICIP every two years, they, they select certain categories of projects that are called set aside projects. They have a lower funding, okay, for $1,000 is your total budget. There is less, one, for this cycle, Cycle 11, and this project, it was the pedestrian cross-
Mayor Potem?
No, I don't, I don't really have anything. I mean, it's always a little bit, when, you know, comes in over engineer estimate. But this is certainly an important project, an intersection that is used quite a lot. In a sense, the school is right there in particular. So I know you did the best that you could to get the, to get the engineer estimate and it is what it is. And I think the project needs to move forward.
Thank you very much. And do we have, at this point, I just, we don't, we don't have anybody in the audience. We don't have anybody from the public in the audience except Mr. Beishu. Do you have any questions? Great. All right. Then do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I second. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez and a second by Councilmember Lamb. Please vote. Councilmember Gutierrez, do you have a screen to vote?
For some reason, I don't see it.
I think it's behind your square there.
Is it missing?
It appears.
No?
It's missing.
Is your vote yes or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll fill it in for you.
Thank you so much. And I'll move on while you're doing that.
The motion carries all eyes.
And that is our second legislative action is a 2025-26 budget rollover and budget adjustments. Good evening, Mr. Beishu. Good evening, Mr. Beresak.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, barely.
Okay, how's that?
Better.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pertin, City Council, last but not least, the proposed budget adjustments for this current fiscal year, FY 25-26, as usual. Any questions, please ask as we go along or save until the end. So the background, with the closeout of the city's fiscal year, meaning the year that we're just closing out 24-25, there were certain activities that specific general fund and equivalent obligations were not incurred or expensed. Separately, there's newly identified commitments that have since been identified after you all approved the budget during that process in the April-May timeframe for our new biennial So this evening's discussion, we're going to focus on both the general fund and Measure W. Within the general fund, we'll talk about those budget carryforwards. We will also tie back to the newly identified adjustments, the second bullet on the previous slide. And then on, we also have identified through the council items of July, August, and September, those four council meetings, there are things that you all approved and those are the first quarter budget adjustments. So we've incorporated a slide of what those items are. Then at the end, we'll talk a little bit about Measure W and some items that did not get incurred or expensed in the previous fiscal year that we're requesting authority to add to this year's budget, this new year budget. So let's talk about first off, the general fund carryforwards. On this first slide, you can see with respect to district improvements for the five of you, the amounts that were remaining at the end of fiscal year 24-25, June 30th, that totals almost $200,000. So the first proposed adjustment here is to roll that forward or carry that forward. And I interchangeably use the term rollover or carryforward. Second item, Esperanza Park in the end, with respect to life in the universe, punchless items and then that recurrent, the retention payment that when we pay the prime vendor and do a holdback of 5%, that totals almost $650,000. So we're looking for that authority for Esperanza Park and finishing that up. And then with respect to various general fund carryforward items, financial audits, some of which are cannabis audits, and then we also had intended to start a program on hotel audits. So we, that, those items were not included in this budget at, for this amount, so we're requesting that that move forward. They were in the previous budget, but we didn't spend all the money.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
I got it. You said they weren't anticipated in the budget.
We have a smaller amount in this new budget, but then this is a rollover.
Right. So it was unspent last year. All of this stuff was unspent last year.
Correct. Everything that you, on these first three slides, the subject matter is what did not get incurred or expensed last year. The ERP pace trainings, we have additional out there that's still a holdover from dating back to when we first started the effort on Tyler Energov EPL that we started back to the vendor, then moved over to Tyler. We still have outstanding funds there, so we're requesting that that move forward and that will help us with additional pace trainings through, on the ERP. The zoning code update, if you remember, that's a 21-month project and that came to you all and so the first six months were in last fiscal year, but with the element that's general fund funded, there's 15 remaining months. So we'll need 12, so we'll roll that forward this year and then ironically, next year we'll come forward with the final three months for the next fiscal year. And then in the Public Works Department, within the Engineering Division, there's eight existing projects without remaining professional services. These are not unencumbered, but these are encumbered. These are task projects that the monies are still out there to be done. Keep in mind, with respect to when we talk about public works in engineering, this does go towards our MOE. When we talk about general fund MOE, it's not just the construction piece, we also get credit for professional services aspects as well. So these are encumbered, but did not get spent.
So let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
So some of these items might have been, you intended to spend them last year, but they didn't get spent. But, so you need to roll them forward because there's still things you need to do or buy. Some of these things, like the zoning code update, for example, if you knew the contractor was of a certain length, wouldn't you budget, normally budget those months that were in one fiscal year in that fiscal year and then you'd budget the remaining months in the other fiscal year?
When it's a general fund commitment, sir, we have to budget it in the year that it's approved. But then if it happens, that's when we come back and we roll it forward.
Although, only reason I ask that is last meeting, you know, we had the, this was our balance and we, we finished, you know, so much lower in the expenditures, great news, great news. But part of it was, at the time, you knew we had obligations and, I mean, you're going over them now, but it would be more transparent to either do these two presentations together or, you know what, you know what I'm saying? Because it makes it look like we did great, which you did in many areas. I'm not trying to minimize that, or the city did in not spending all of their budget authority. But at the time, some of the areas, a million and a half dollars worth, we knew that these were going to, these looked like savings, but they're going to come back next meeting and get added back on.
So in, in the past, there's been the concept of doing preliminary financial results by the second meeting in October. We're still calling this information when we're doing our rollover, so we don't have the specifics in time in order to be able to meet that deadline for what would be the deadline for the second meeting in October.
I've got you, but some of these are contracts that had a monthly, or like you're saying, there were multiple parts to it. You knew about those last year.
And some of those we do, some of them we don't. I mean, we could couple it together and do it and then potentially postpone the preliminary financial results till the first meeting.
No, no, they already take long enough, so I'm not, not saying we want to do that. I'm just asking because, you know, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, it's just the way this process works. It looks like, on one meeting, it looks like, oh, we did good, we had authority to spend this much money, but we didn't spend. I don't remember what the number was, $5 million worth of it or something like that. Then you come the next meeting and say, well, actually, we had these contracts that were approved last year, we knew we were going to have to pay them this year, so now we've got to add that one back on.
We can work on trying, it does happen every year, we can see if there's measures we can implement to try to mitigate.
Yes, or minimize it, because it seems like a kind of a lot in total, you know? And so it doesn't, it just, what I'm saying, it just kind of clouds that other picture. Because now we got to come and, there are already things that are in progress, so of course, we're, you know, going to prove them, but it, it just means we didn't get a super clear picture last time.
Understood.
All right.
So those were the three components of that which did not get incurred or expensed. So let's talk budget increases that, of items that were identified, call it mid-April forward, that weren't able to be included in the budget with respect to items that were then identified and that's part two of this presentation. The city manager recruitment, the city manager recruitment, we had budgeted $20,000 and that was approved for not to exceed a $40,000. So that's what this extra $20,000 is. The balloon festival for third-party labor and different types of activities, legal, et cetera, whatever, is an item that was not included in the budget and that's estimated at a not to exceed of $17,500.
All right. So can we get, I see you started to stand up. So can we get more?
Certainly, this is why.
The balloon festival is a little sensitive, not, not that we don't love it, but there have been a number of expenditures on that, so if we just at least clarify a little bit.
Yeah, I would probably want Eric's guidance on what I'm allowed to really talk about related to the work here, but it is a third-party contract consultant related to the litigation for the protection of the balloon festival.
So is it solely litigation or is it also mixed with maybe work on our current balloon festival?
It is, I would say, at this point, it's 90% legal, 10% with a little bit of logistics and things on the handover from doing a festival, the same way 10 years bringing on that, you know, and having a smaller staff.
So it was some type of expert assistance that was needed?
Correct, yeah. And I, I consider especially the legal aspect of it and, you know, I, I think the, the contributions were invaluable to the overall case. So that aspect of it, I also would consider it mostly unanticipated, just related to the needs.
And sometimes litigation fees are paid by the attorney and then billed back through us, but this was not one, this is one that the city paid for directly?
Correct, but the finance director can weigh in a little bit more. I, I don't anticipate we're going to get anywhere near that $17,500, nor are we close now.
This isn't up to, this isn't a bill that's.
Correct. Not to exceed, yeah.
All right, that's, that helps, thanks, Andrew.
And for the first three months, we're at about half of that and so that was through September, so we just received an October bill. We might have a November bill, but I would be shocked that we would get to the $17,500. But that's what the contract is for. Newly identified, or, so those were one-time types of things, this is newly identified recurring type items that would be applicable to this fiscal year. We would also, based on your concurrence, these would be elements that we would include in year two of the budget because they would be recurring. And then when we do the next biennial budget thereafter, these items would be included during, would be included on our tips list that we have so that for the new things that we know we need to incorporate next time. The LGBTQ+ Desert Business Association membership and the annual event. The Palm Strings International Film Festival, if you remember, that was a $75,000 bogey and with the contract that came forth after the budget was approved, the film festival folks asked that that be increased to $90,000.
All right, should we take these one by one or do you want questions at the end?
Oh, no, sure.
Okay, so the first two are not the same. They're different. So the first one is Desert Business Association membership, which isn't new, we've been a member with them for a number of years. So is there some reason why that wasn't included in the budget?
We haven't been a member, I think, for a bit of time with that organization. They've been wanting us to be a member, but they have.
Well, I used to go to their meetings all the time and we were a member at that time, so I don't know where it dropped off. So my, my, my understanding is, of course, during this budget process, there was a lot of talk about chambers of commerce and reassignment of funding that used to go to the Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce to other, other needs that were identified by our economic development manager that would better suit the city. And I don't think that this came up for discussion, so perhaps if there was a lapse, that might have been why. I wasn't aware of an lapse, I don't know what used to be. So, but there was probably a pool of money in the department, maybe not big enough, that was for other types of memberships. So why is this not coming out of that pool of funds?
When, I think when staff had built the budget coming into this year, this was not a budgeted expense for membership into this particular chamber.
All right.
And it was part of, I think, that evaluation of chamber memberships this year and what value that was bringing to the city. And so it wasn't directly budgeted in the budget prepared for council adoption.
Okay, so if, if this has been an issue with it somehow being funded out of a pool and then some years it didn't get paid, some years it did, and some of us that would go to those events just didn't know, and they did, they were gracious enough not to say, then it's probably best that this get included in the annual budget because many businesses in Cathedral City participate in this group and many even of the nonprofits do. And I know I typically try to attend the events that are in Cathedral City, so if you learn of any, let me know, because I don't know, I'm not the named person on there, it used to be Stone James. So, so I think that should be on it. Now let's go to the second one. So the second one is a buying a table at a fundraiser and I know the city manager has a pool of money that they buy tables out of. We don't usually get, we bought a table, now we need to have a budget adjustment. It's, it's repurchased out of that pool.
So if I can give a caveat with respect to this year in using Tyler Munis with, using the central budget entry module, which we were very happy to be able to do to provide that kind of detail, this is something that I'm sure, the whole master scheme of things, we would survive without that budget adjustment tied to this item. But to share with you, with this year forward, we actually are tying back to, people are tying back to what all their pieces are and under sponsorships, there was an estimated amount for that pool that you refer to. And initially, for that pool of what that estimated amount was, this wasn't included.
Didn't we, didn't we also buy a table last year? How did we do that and that not be included in the?
Like, I do not, that's where we coordinate and we're with the departments on what they think that they may be having on a go-forward basis.
Kevin, if I can clarify, I think this item, we're, what we're going to do is just absorb it into the budget that we have. And one of the things that I have been working with finance on and with communications is just kind of getting a clearer picture of what our sponsorships are, you know, what is in that budget and evaluating, you know, what are the things that we can and can't support based on? I mean, there's an abundance of requests for sponsorship for events, certainly the city can't sponsor everything, but what my recommendation is, is just to take this off the list and that we will absorb it in the existing budget that we have.
So that, that does make sense because I'm sure what you, probably most budget items, you look at what you spent last year and you might even articulate where you spent it and then you're going to come up with a pool, but you don't, items like this, that are these buying tables at events, sponsorships, those types of things, the city management makes a decision and says, yes, this one, no, this one. And at the end, when they run out of money, they run out of money for these tables or money gets moved from somewhere else, or you didn't come to council. But it just seems weird to me that this, this would come up in the first budget, like we got to make a special budget amendment just for this one when there have been other events.
Yeah.
And there will be, I mean, I mentioned the senior center is going to have a gala, you know, the Boys and Girls Club are going to have some, we're not going to get a budget amendment after the fact for each of those.
No, like I said, it was an error on my part, having this one go forward and we will just adopt, we will include this in the budget, in our budget expenditures and with all of the other considered events. This is one that we've already participated in and so the expense has already been made and we will.
All right, and it would make more sense if you got to the third quarter, which I hope you don't because it's part of the management's job to manage these funds, but if you got to that third quarter and say, hey, I've got some more that we usually participate in council, do you want to increase my budget or not? It just seems funny to increase it upfront for one at a time.
Yeah, like I said, this was an error on my part to let that one.
So when we do make a motion to approve it, it will be understanding that it's removing this $3,500 and the other numbers will be adjusted somewhere down the road?
Just one, just one caveat for transparency, we did not purchase a table last year. We did a four-seater option, which was a couple hundred dollars and I was able to absorb that in my communications and marketing budget, so.
Which is usually, which is usually what happens. It either gets absorbed somewhere or we say, no, we, we're not, we don't have the funding to do it. So thank you. I'm glad you clarified. Yeah, I didn't go, I didn't go last year, so I didn't know, but I was told that we participated last year. All right, thank you. The film festival, I don't, I don't remember. I do remember that there was an increase and I thought some of that was paid for in-kind with the family day. Is that true?
There's also in-kind.
So it's this, it's, how much was budgeted, did you say for the?
$75,000.
$75,000 was budgeted. Previously, it was $50,000 and during the last two-year budget cycle, it increased from 50 to 75.
Right.
After this budget was approved, they came back to the city requesting, and did we want to go to the $90,000 level to assume our same level?
So is it really $90,000 or we're technically at a higher level, but they gave us credit for in-kind to some?
It's $90,000 in cash and then there's additional in-kind.
All right, because I do remember that discussion, I just don't remember what the, what the numbers were, so. All right, thank you.
Website monthly maintenance, with respect to taking and contracting out our website monthly maintenance, the, what was included in the, in the budget was $5,000 a month or $60,000. And what we are with Montage, the vendor, we're looking at $6,000 a month or $72,000. And so that is the difference of the $12,000 for that.
And I'll add on to that, just one quick thing, Kevin. So part of this is going to be, we, with the new website that's going to be unveiled, there's a lot of additional opportunities for more dynamic information to be on the website, too. So it's an opportunity for them to keep the content more current, having more dynamic, whether it's programs or capital project we want to highlight or just special events that are. that are coming up, that they'll be able to help us maintain currency in our, our website, so that it's not just kind of all of the stale information that's on there right now.
So this is, this is, it's not 12, that's how I read it, it's not 12,000 a month?
It's, went from 5,000 a month to 6,000 a month, which is, the delta is a $12,000 increase for the year. 1,000 a month, $12,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The next item in our most recent budget that you all approved in May, in the police department, we have one FTE of part-time dispatchers to cover that ability to absorb and mitigate extra overtime-type activities. That is a concept that had not been included yet with the fire department. And then earlier this year, after the start of the fiscal year, I'd say the end of July, it was approved for the fire department to be able to hire part-time ambulance operators to do the same type of, what we do across the hall with the PSL, with respect to the police department. So what this is, this would be the equivalent of one FTE, call it four part-timers, five part-timers, we treat across the hall as five part-timers, on average about 20% per, so this would incorporate the same concept, so that we would have a means of helping the fire department mitigate their overtime by having part-time ambulance operators.
I think the fire chief did speak to us about this, though, but it's just not, it's showing up here instead of the, instead of your list of pre-approved, because at the time that he discussed it with us, there was no budget adjustment technically asked for.
This was not included in the, in the budget, so that, FTE count of 231, I believe, that was in the budget, this would increase to be 232.
And of course, any offsetting revenue from fees collected, or if it happened to be in the Measure W crew or something, that would be collected on the revenue side.
That is on the revenue side, not as an offset. And then with respect to library security cameras, IT came in with a $4,000 a year expense for that, that was not included in their original budget. So I think the takeaway is, with respect to this slide, the one item that we would look at eliminating or deleting is the second item, the $3,500.
And now, Kevin, for the city website maintenance, we used to have a designated employee that used to take care of all that.
Correct.
So we are saving tons of money, instead of having a full-time employee doing this, we just hired a company to do the same.
Exactly, and so what happened, that's where that was taken into consideration with the budget, because that activity transpired the end of April, early May, but it was in that process of trying to negotiate what the money amount was. So yes, we saved, in this new budget, we saved, call it $150,000 on average for that type of an FTE, for that type of a person, but that offsetting cost in outsourcing is $72,000. So when you look at it that way, council member, we're saving $80,000.
Great savings, thank you.
Certainly. So moving on with respect to first quarter budget adjustments, and you'll see in the next slide that this is incorporated into where we are, but for the first four meetings, as I mentioned, July, August, and the two meetings in September, these are the items that impacted the general fund. So in dollar sort order, for Tropical Storm Hillary, there's an FHWA match, and that came in at $167,000 for the design, with respect to that and what was approved. For the balloon festival, for the sound skills amendment, the $80,000, that was, that's item number two. Cannabis odor control, there was a staff report that you all approved, that came in for those odor control services at 59.5. If you remember, there was, in the building department, there was a new truck, not a replacement truck, so whenever we have something new that gets added into the equipment replacement, we have to fund it initially to get it there, and so that was the cost for that new truck. And that was brought to you for your approval. The Art in California grant, there's, that's that 89, $98,000 grant, and then there's $170,000 of a match, of which 90% is forecasted to come out of the impact fee fund for art in public places, but in that council report that you approved, approximately 10% or less, and that's what the $17,230 is, would be from the general fund. For the Sarah Street approval, the match on that is 15,000, there is a fire EMPG grant match of 8,000, and for the software for the festival of arts, that was $5,000.
Kevin, I think, just in looking at that, I think the $5,000 for the festival of arts, this is the Public Arts Commission one?
Yes.
That's their whole, that's their general fund, their existing general fund budget?
Okay, we can, we can reverse that, but the way the staff report was, we did that as, but we can take that out of the budget.
Yeah, I apologize, that one I missed. The, the council approved $5,000 of their existing current general fund budget for the event, so that is a new budget.
So we can remove that as well?
Yeah.
So we have $3,500 and $5,000 to remove. So then, when you look at the three categories and you see what that totals up to, the carry-forwards, the 1.5, almost 1.5 million, the one-time of 37.5 minus the 3,500 now, that would be 34,000, and on the recurring, the 157.9, that would be 152.9. So that would be the adjustment there, so basically we would take off $8,500 from this So then look at the projection, and this ties back to last council meeting, the update of that, and that is, if you remember correctly, we're still in this similar ballpark with respect to, we were in a couple percent higher in the 40s with respect to the, the original budget was 44, and now we're at 41% based on these budget adjustments. If with this revenue, that is the same amount of revenue, but with these budget adjustments, that would potentially, we'd be looking at a $7.8 million deficit, this goes back to, will we have a $7.8 million deficit? Probably not, just based on some of the things that we budget higher, like our salaries for full staff. We haven't done, and then a corresponding impact on the original budget for next year. If you approve, based on that, the items that would be in the recurring slide, we would then adjust this accordingly as well. Any questions? So moving on, that's it for general fund, Measure W, we have three items that tie back to Measure W fund obligations of items that were in last year's budget that are carry-forwards or roll-forwards. And there were various items that you approved in one of those staff reports back in the April-May timeframe for Measure W purchases from the fire department. And three items didn't make it with respect to possibly ordered, but not delivered, and so if it's not delivered or a service is not provided, we can't pay for it out of that year. So that's what these three carry-forwards are, the striker chair, miscellaneous uniforms and safety gear, and then the broadband and cellular services, that ties back to the command tablet. Ironically, the command tablet software was purchased in the old year, but the hardware was not. So hardware got delivered after June 30th, and that's what that $23,000 number is for. So in total, that's $45,000 and change. So to emphasize, and this is why we'll be back to you next month, because of the budget that we have, that we passed, and now with these adjustments, we feel that it is even more important and prudent for us to be more deliberate and focus on efficiencies and priorities of our internal operations in supporting our community and our constituents, while at the same time safeguarding our financial stability of the city's general fund. In doing so, we continue to monitor current year general fund expenditures and evaluate any changes that's necessary, so that's why one of the items on future council reports in the December 10th meeting is to give you a status update on where we're at in the first quarter, or as, I should say, as of the first quarter, because as you're aware, many of our revenues are delayed. This is in support of our five-year strategic plan goal C and our main objective in goal C with respect to economically prosperous. So with your support of the proposed amendments, we would ask that city council approve these budget increases. For the general fund, it would be that number you see before you, minus the $8,500 that was discussed, and then for Measure W, the 45 and change. Any further questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
The $32,000, I believe it is, for a new truck, is that for the new employee that was hired in the building department?
Yes, in the building department, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. An inspector. Oh, we're just trying to...
We're ignoring it.
Yes.
We're almost done.
Mayor, you see that sign that says, moving forward, we're just moving forward.
Okay, just moving forward, that's it.
Any other questions?
So I don't have any questions about this, but when we get that report next month, because it's so, as you say, the revenues, the expenditures are a little more even, even they're not 100% even, because you have certain ones that occur at certain times, but the revenues are all wonky, do you also look at, compare it to the same quarter of the previous year?
Yes.
So we can see, that, to me, that tells you more whether, and there may be reasons why, but if revenues are off, you know, then you could, you could tell, because they tend to follow some type of pattern over the course of the year.
Correct, and a good example is sales tax. When the, when the state provides a sales tax, the first two months of the quarter are estimates. The third month of the quarter, which we won't receive until Thanksgiving week for the month of September, that's a true up. So in the third month of every quarter, we have a true up. So it's hard to look at just those first two months because they're estimates, but the purpose is in the pudding with what the vendor's actually providing their tax, quarterly tax payments.
All right, good, I'll look forward to that report, that sounds good.
Okay, so I've already polled them, we don't have any questions for you. So are, we don't have any members of the public?
But we do have a written comment that we received.
Okay, written comment is great.
So we did receive a written comment from Sunshine Herrera, expressing her concern with how the information is provided in the staff report.
Thank you, madam, do we have a motion to...
So I move to approve as amended during the presentation.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem, oops, hold on a second, Mayor Protem Gregory, and a second by Councilmember Lamb, please vote.
Mine is not working.
Your still is missing, okay, and is yours, I, or no?
Yeah, I am, yes.
Perfect. So that just leaves one question, do we have any discussions on future agenda items?
No. But I will note that I have asked the city manager to look at dates for a future goal setting, I know we had talked about it in relation to a new city manager, but it, it seems that it would be a good idea to get it on calendar, and likely if a new city manager isn't in place by then, they're not gonna be ready to, you know, have goals, they're not gonna be ready anyways, so at some point, we need to, before we get too far into the year, if we're gonna have goal setting, we need to just do it, and then they can come in and, and learn what we discussed.
So recommend we go ahead with it, whether, if we have a new city manager, fine, if not, Ann would just have to bring him up to speed.
Right, and at least they would, didn't have the document and the discussion.
I'm agreeable with that.
And what we can do is also have the, on videotape, so that she can watch it.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
That's not a bad idea at all.
Thank you.
And also, we'd like to bring something up, also, that we have an employee that's gonna be retiring soon, and we'd like to extend her contract for another five years.
That's gonna be a hard one.
Right, Tracy?
Sometimes it's just time.
So what do you recommend to Mayor Protem?
So she's working on dates.
You'll work that out.
I can bring that back to the next council meeting for discussion.
Yeah, and we're looking at another, we're looking at doing like a full-year calendar, too, so everybody will know in advance.
Wouldn't we have it last year, I don't remember, was it?
We did it here last year.
We did it here.
Which is...
Save the costs from using the hotel.
Yeah, because we also need to, we know we need to move at least one meeting, because Veterans Day falls on our normal meeting Wednesday next year, so we know and need to move that, and of course, we wanna look at where CalCities, if they publish their dates and those kind of things, so, she's working on a calendar anyways, but I just wanted to mention it to council, because we'd had some discussion before about the goal setting, and it really does...
Thank you. We did not have any closed session, it hasn't already been reported out, and so we are adjourning. Our next council meeting will be held December 10th, and we wish you all a great week.
Congratulations.
That's it, that's it.